I state your name.
I, Janet Smith.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly
And that I will not knowingly
Receive
Receive.
Directly or indirectly
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as city manager
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as city manager.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I call to order the Bethany City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 5th, 2018. Before Councilmember Moore leads us in the flag salute, he has a special announcement to make.
I'd like to just take a second before everybody else gets the opportunity and dedicate tonight's flag salute to a veteran and his wife who will have accomplished something that most everyone in this room will never accomplish, and that is their 60th wedding anniversary. Mr. Phil and Charlene Shirey are going to celebrate their 60th wedding anniversary. That is amazing.
Okay, attention.
Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Todd, will you lead us in prayer?
Heavenly Father, we come before you in the name of Jesus and we ask your presence at tonight's proceedings. We pray for your divine guidance and wisdom, help us to sense your presence and know that you are there. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Item 1, tonight is the consent docket A through E, and I had a question, and I know Mr. Todd had a question or two also. I saw on the, I guess it was the claims list, $323 monthly payment to the YMCA membership. Is that? What is that? What do we? I was just curious about that.
It's a program that we have with them where they give us a discounted rate and employees pay for it.
Okay.
It's not just for employees.
So we could all get in shape at that rate?
Yeah.
Are you saying we're members and we don't know it?
No, you can be a member.
Okay.
Mr. Todd, did you have some questions you mentioned?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I had two items. I actually have a whole page worth, and I went yesterday and talked to Ms. Susan, and thank you, Ms. Susan, for helping me to understand some of these. But two items that are particularly concerning to me. On the claims list, there's $7,355.46 to the City of Oklahoma City, and that's a monthly fee for the water meter. Is that correct?
Those are valves that kind of...
Sorry, what was the amount?
$7,355. Well, that equates to $88,265 a year for no services rendered.
It's called pay or play. What do you call that? Pay or whether or not to play.
He's trying to say take or pay, but that's not. But that's not what that is. We are paying Oklahoma City for three emergency connections. In fairness to Oklahoma City, they do have to maintain their lakes, their pipes, their pumps, and all those other things so that if we need their water, we can buy it at an outrageously expensive price. But that is what we're paying for, is to have that emergency supply available.
Without that, we can't connect to that.
Right.
So we pay a monthly fee in case we have to pay them for their water?
Yes, we pay a monthly fee and hope we never have to use the water that we're paying to make available. Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, I just find that, I mean, I don't have the answer right now, but $88,000 a year for no benefit whatsoever?
It might be easier to understand. You charge a base rate for a residential customer to have a water bill, whether he uses any water or not, because you have to invest in your water plant, your wells, your pipes, your pumps, and all those other things, and that all costs money. Whether anybody uses a drop or not, you've got it out there and you paid for it. So that's kind of analogous to what you're paying Oklahoma City for.
Was that price negotiated, or was it set by Oklahoma City?
It's not take or pay. It's take it or leave it. Yeah.
The second item I had on my agenda is item number 18-29566. It's to ImageNet Consulting, and $7,483.40. And that's, I'm told, we looked it up, and it's for four terabytes of additional storage. Is that correct?
It's for 16 terabytes of additional storage for...
For 16?
Or 16, yeah. It's for storage for the... Okay, I've just completely gone.
Laserfish. Laserfish.
Yeah, for laserfish storage, yeah. We had maxed out on our laserfish storage. We couldn't, the court was going to have to shut down, the billing was going to have to shut down, we had no room left. They had to go back through and get rid of some stuff that we really didn't want to get rid of, just to continue to operate, and we got a fantastic deal on 16-trig terabytes of room. And...
Where are you basing a great deal?
Great deal is...
$7,000 is a great deal?
Yes, $7,500 was a good deal.
Well, for 16 terabytes and for the storage that we're needing right now, and what this is used for is, let's say that there are companies out there who need to access our planning and zoning information. Instead of us literally having to go and put our hands on physical documents, now we have all of those in one place so that we can access those electronically, and we can answer these companies who are saying, "Tell us about your zoning. Tell us, you know, what are your rules of setback?" So we have all of that together. So what we've been doing is scanning in all of these documents that go back probably almost 100 years now, is what we're trying to do so that we can become electronic and in this age.
Why do we pay American Publishing to do the same thing then?
Who's... Go ahead, Susan. Oh, okay, so...
They would have zoning, there's their ordinances.
Ordinances.
And the charter.
Well, the charter is part of the ordinances. It is what your basis of ordinance is, and every 10 years, you're required by law to do what they call a codification. And codification says, "We are establishing all of your ordinances" and saying that they're legitimate. They actually become law. Every two years, you have to update your ordinances that pertain to penalties and fees and fines. Otherwise, you cannot have your police officers or your code enforcement go and give tickets. So every two years, at least, we have to be sending in these things to that publishing company, which apparently are who codify for us.
And we vote on it every two years.
Yes, and what you do, well, you vote on your ordinances as we bring them to you, and then what happens is, when we send those ordinances to this company, they send us back the completed version, and then you approve it again. And it says, "This is law now."
Okay, it just seems like it's duplication of a lot of stuff, because American Publishing, we pay thousands of dollars.
You do for codification. You typically can pay anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 every, at least every 10 years. And if you codify, or if you send in for supplementation every two years, it can be $3,000 to $5,000 for that.
But when you go onto our website and you want to look up something, it takes you to the American Publishing site, and it has it all?
They host it for us, which is very normal. You have a lot of companies that do that now so that we don't have to pay the hosting fees for that, but it is expensive. We can look at, you know, another company for doing that. I just haven't been here long enough to look at it yet.
Well, okay, so I have some questions related to that. In my own feeble attempt to come to an understanding as to why we spend so much money, I got on Amazon, and I determined that you could buy two terabytes of a portable external hard drive. I understand that that's not, you know, up to the commercial standard, but you can do, you can buy one of those for $65.99. So let's say we buy eight. That would come to a total, according to my math, of approximately $527.92. So where is the justification for the remaining balance of this bill? Are we paying Laserfish and ImageNet for $6,000-plus worth of administrative services related to this particular amount of data for our documents? Because it seems to me that this is excessive, and we don't really have a clear justification as to why we're paying this bill. And that's what concerns me. I mean, if we owe the money and we're getting a valid service for the money that we're paying, I completely understand that. But if we don't get clear answers from the staff related to the expenditures, it's our job to determine that those expenditures are being done in good faith, and we're not wasting the people's money, because we don't have a lot of money, and we want to save money. And it looks like that this is just a viable alternative, and we're just going to put a rubber stamp on it and pay the bill. And with that in mind, I would request that this bill be pulled and that we look internally to figure out if this is a feasible amount of money and come up with a justification for this payment. And if they want to wait two weeks, they can wait two weeks.
Mr. Palmer, I'll be happy to address that if you'll allow me to do that. I did approve this expenditure because we were at a complete standstill on our ability to continue to scan invoices in general government, but also in our court system. We were not able to include, you know, the tickets and the fines and everything that was necessary for that. I felt it was important that we continue our essential services, so I did approve this purchase. I do intend to have a full audit of all of our computer services done so that the council is aware of all of the expenditures and that we actually will group it in as a budgetary item so that there are no hidden expenses there. But in the short term, I did approve it because I felt like that we had to.
Well, and I appreciate that, and I think, thank you for the explanation. It's just that we have seen these items. We've seen substantial amount of money in payments to ImageNet every, you know, consent docket. And I've asked for justification. I've asked for alternative means. I've asked for alternative bids, you know. In my profession, there are court reporters who have a repository, and they maintain exhibits and deposition transcripts that are available to the attorneys when they want to use them, based upon a password or a sign-in. And I'm, I don't know if ImageNet does that, but I think that that might be somebody we could call to say, "Hey, is this a good price, and if it is, tell us," so that we know that we're not losing money or wasting the people's money. So, and I appreciate that, and I think that that's... It sounds like it got so bad, we had to do it, and we had to pay this money at this point in time. And I'm okay with that. It's just that I don't understand why we are spending so much money. It brings up a lot of questions in my mind, and we're supposed to be transparent with the people's money, and I don't feel like we're getting a straight answer. So with that in mind, I look forward to a straight answer, and I look forward to allowing the people to come to an understanding as to why we're spending this money.
Mr. Palmer, weren't you told if you, that there was no time to do it, and if you, you were more than free to go look in the phone book for more companies?
I think that that may have been said, but at this point in time, that may be kind of, well, yes, I was. But I don't know if that's a productive issue we need to discuss at this point.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question about this? Are those 16 terabytes, are they hard units here local, or are they on a cloud or something?
They'll be hard units here.
Okay.
Yeah, we will literally see them and be able to put our hands on them.
Are they on-site here at the municipal building?
Yes.
Well, I have a question on that same thing. At 5:09 this afternoon, I went to Home Depot, Office Depot, and I took a picture of four terabytes, and got it for $119.99. And I'm going, something's just not adding up. And so I really don't, I'm with Mr. Palmer. I don't, I don't quite understand it, because I'm thinking, it seems like ImageNet views us as the slot machine that pays and every pull the handle. And so I've got to, I need some help here.
Well, and please understand, I'm coming from the perspective of a business. If it's an itemized expense that needs to be taken care of in order to ensure that we can provide a quality service to our customer, I'm all for that. But we don't waste money, because you have to earn money and, you know, pay employees, and you have to make payroll. So I think if we take the approach of a business related to what we buy, I think we can justify the expense to the public, and that's what we need to do at this point in time.
I do have a... I have one question on that as well. Is, do they provide a, is it a redundant backup system, or is it just what we have here? FEMA recommends at least 35 miles away, just for a reason of natural disaster. Do we have two systems in different places?
That's on our other backup system, yes. We have a backup system that is here, and then we have a cloud backup system that's...
Just, I just wanted to make sure of that.
Yeah, very far away, yeah.
This is our third system?
No, this is just a storage system. This is not the backup system. This is just a system that allows us to continue to do business.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I had yet another question on item number 18-29528. It says we bought 31 crepe myrtle trees for $9,700, and that figures out to $312.90 apiece. And I just, I've not been buying trees lately. That just sounds awfully high. I'm wondering if I've...
They've got grant money for those trees.
Was that a part of the grant?
Yeah.
Even if it's grant money, that doesn't, that's not the point.
I'd like to ask Phil Stoll if he'll, if he will come and address that, please.
Absolutely. These crepe myrtles were part of the grant design, but they weren't funded by the grant. So it was recommended by the Park Task Force and to bring it to you guys to see if we want to do the whole design as it was. And there are 31 crepe myrtles, and we did go out and get three quotes, and they ranged from the $9,700 up to $24,000. We got those. And we went with the low bid, and they are desirable specimens. They're multi-trunk, eight-foot, really nice crepe myrtles. But I guess to turnkey install them, you know, perch them, install them, that's what it costs.
Did, we did not install them? That was part of the price that we used?
No, we didn't. We didn't install them. No, they, the contractor saw them, perched them. We approved what they got, and they went and installed them.
With all due respect, why didn't we install them?
It was, it just wasn't approached from that fashion. We are, we got our personnel tied up with other maintenance duties, no mowing, weed eating, things like that.
What did the grant pay for?
I'm sorry?
What did the grant pay for?
About trees, the other trees. You know, there's 30, 33 trees, I believe, installed right there now. That's what the grant covered, just the trees, not...
How much did they pay for their trees?
I don't have those figures in front of me right now. I believe... I don't have those figures in front of me right now, Mr. Moore, but I can sure, I can sure get them for you.
Would you agree with me, if you do it in-house, it's less expensive?
I would agree.
Councilman Palmer, I'd have to go and look at, you know, the pricing of the specimens if we pick them up at the retail level. More than likely, yes, because our desire for any kind of profit margin wouldn't be there.
Well, let me just point out that we did get three bids, as we were supposed to. And, you know, they were the lowest one. Plus, they did offer the installation of that. And when you have an expert who is able to install something like a tree, and, you know, you have to be careful, make sure you get the depth right and the water right and all of those things. So, and honestly, you know, at this time of year, our number of employees is down right now, so...
Well, we have a certified arborist. It seems like they could dictate, related to the proper procedure to plant a tree, so we could do it in-house to save some money.
Is there, is there some, I mean, what are the odds of some of these trees dying? Is there any kind of guarantee, having used an outside source?
Right, they've got a year guarantee. Right.
And you need to use a prescribed person to put it in to get that warranty. You just can't walk down the door...
Right.
It's quite, quite possibly true, yeah.
And if a crepe myrtle walked out the door and you planted it, it dies.
Pre-care, pre-care gives a, pre-care gives a year warranty, no matter who plants.
Phil, do you, do you know about Oklahoma Forest Regeneration Station down in Washington?
No, I don't.
Washington, Oklahoma?
No, I don't.
Because that's a state-run agency, and they supply trees to cities. And that's, I mean, you can get them almost for free, not quite, but it's, probably should be looked at if any more trees get bought.
Okay.
Do I have a motion for the consent docket?
I couldn't get a word in earlier. May I speak now? So I'm backtracking to Laserfish. I've got a different angle. A comment was made that we got rid of some stuff that we didn't really want to. What did we get rid of off of Laserfish? My understanding is that this was a permanent storage, and things were not being able to be deleted, and this was our document record keeping.
That's what we were told. It's impossible to delete in the face of the present.
Is there some checks, some balances to who is able to delete and who checks those? How many people check those? So when we scan in...
He's alluding to that, I think.
When we scan in documents, are the papers, the papers then shredded and gone?
We, we are going to be looking at that policy because we still need to hold on to the paper for a period of time and not immediately do that. And state law does require that we hold on to paper copies for a certain amount of time. And this is only my second full day. And so I would remind everyone that it takes me a little while to kind of get through the whole list here. But we are looking at policies and procedures and best practices and guidelines across the board because we need to comply with state law and federal law where applicable in every category. So we will be doing that.
And I would make a motion that that invoice be pulled, and then we can get something in writing from the staff related to the clarification regarding the process, the cost, and the need for this expenditure. And if we need to, we can call ImageNet and tell them, you know, "We're not going to pay you for two weeks. Granted, we paid you thousands of dollars in the past. You can wait until we get some kind of assessment." What do they, what do they, what do they do in the meantime? Just so I know, as far as the next two weeks?
In the meantime, I don't, I think you call ImageNet and ask that to continue the service, and we'll delay payment. I mean, if they don't turn off the cable, if you don't pay the bill, you can say, "Hey, I want to, you know, have an assessment."
Well, the problem is, though, that Laserfish is separate from, it's different from ImageNet. ImageNet is the company. Laserfish is the application that actually saves the documents. And so when we don't, whenever you pull the payment, then we're not able to save any documents, and so our city stops at this point. Unless, you know what, we can go to the, we can start holding on the papers. So I see your point, and I will make sure that we hold on to the papers, and I look at this quickly and make an assessment on it.
Well, it just, it boggles the mind that we're kind of at a point where they have us, to the extent that we have to pay them. You know, it's similar to Oklahoma City. I mean, we don't have any options. And if we're doing a disservice to the public because we're paying too much money, we need to say, "This is a good price." I still haven't seen anything. So, I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult. I just want a justification for the policies and practices that we're implementing. And we really haven't gotten a good explanation up to this point. And that's all I want. I want something in writing that says that this is what we have, as opposed to a comment here or something there. Something that I can read and conclusively come to a conclusion to say, "Hey, I can recommend that this is the right thing to do for the residents of Bethany."
I know Mr. Caden, when he was the acting city manager, had requested from various departments information on ImageNet and other things. So he may have something.
Well, I think it'd be good practice if we have these issues that come up, they'd be documented by the city clerk, and then a written response be provided by the city staff or the city manager so that we have a record. Because if we're not keeping track of this, it's just going to get pushed back, and it's going to fall through the cracks. And I don't want that to happen, because it's happened in the past, and that's been kind of the MO up to this point.
Well, I have to make a suggestion. Now, I handle each time. I pay on a credit card, and I've got about 30 days to make up my mind. And if it, and if it doesn't fly with my assessment of what it should be done, I call my credit card company, tell them to send my money back. Now, whether we've got $17,000 on our credit card or not, I don't know what we should have.
City manager, do you, do you recommend that we pay this to keep things going smoothly, honestly?
Steve, do we already have the equipment? Have they delivered that yet?
I don't think so. I think that they were expecting it today. So if they got it today, that's all that's...
Okay. Well, this gives me an opportunity to call them and get them in to talk with them, and also maybe do some other things. In the meanwhile, you know, we can go back to the paper route that we're not scanning things in right now, and let me have some time to look at this and give you a good assessment of it.
It doesn't need to be two weeks. We're going to probably have a special meeting. We can put it on that agenda, too.
Yeah, we probably could.
So do I have a motion for the consent docket with the removal of this item?
So moved.
Please cast your votes. Item 2 is a public hearing item for discussion, consideration, and comments concerning the fiscal year 2019 budget for the general fund, miscellaneous other funds, and various trusts. Is this, is this a public hearing, or is this just a discussion to see kind of where we are in regards to the budget?
Actually, I just really wanted to hand it out to you at this point. Mr. Harsman has been working on it quite a bit. Steve, is there anything that you'd like to submit to the council?
Basically, what I have been doing is just taking the numbers that were supplied by staff in the absence of those who usually do this. We use the same forms, the same paperwork, that, the same program that he was using to do that, and basically just filled in the information as it had been filled in in the past. And you have been presented with a form that printed off based on that information. And we, we have a, we have a general budget. We have a capital budget. And again, it is, it is based on the entry that was... And again, it is, it is based on the entry that was made. That it still needs to be gone through. We still need to, there, you know, there are things that need to be cut out, some things that probably need to be added. There have been additional, uh, things added that the council had requested. And, uh, but this, this gives you a general idea of where we're at right now. We have not just been sitting around waiting on the budget to appear before us. We have been working on it.
So, we will get more detail?
Oh, much more detail, yeah. We have much more detail.
When are we going to get it?
Well, we have to have it out by the seventh to the general public, so we're down to the wire on this. And I do have additional information for you, um, but really, it's in a very, there's a lot of papers to it right now. I wanted to give you a summary tonight and tell you that, you know, uh, you will have the opportunity to take out anything that you feel is unnecessary in here. You know, obviously, we have to work within the guidelines that you give to us. But I wanted you to see that basically these numbers are the same budget that was presented and approved last year. Uh, this is the same worksheet, Excel spreadsheet that, you know, has been used, um, for, this will be the second year now. And so, we, we've held true to what was last year.
With increases?
Question mark. There are some increases.
I would rather have, I would rather pass exactly as we did last year without the, the same increases.
I'm sorry?
The same budget we passed last year since we're going to just pass this administratively and then fix it?
Yeah.
We passed last year's budget with no increases and then we can change it, fix it.
We could do that.
That would be best.
Because ideally, we, we should have been having monthly meetings or something leading into this.
Right.
Which didn't happen last time and it's not happening this time for reasons.
That would be a, a very reasonable thing to do is, is just continue last year's budget and then have budget meetings and adjust the budget. We could do that.
Because there were items in there that if you follow protocol, fifty-six percent increases, seventy-six percent increases. If you continue that trend, we'll be out of business.
Those, those have been removed from even the budget that I did, so many of those have been removed. But that would be a very good way to, to take care of the issues that we have right now. Would be just to make that budget again and then over the next two months, month, two months, let us work on the budget and, 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 I mean, again.
And refine it, yeah.
Yeah, us, as a collective, yeah.
Well, yeah.
And the city manager has had like two days to look at the budget.
So, will we be having?
How much hands can you put on the budget when you've had two days to do it, so?
A little bit, not much.
We, uh, I think, we have to, uh, publish this by the seventh and then we will have to approve it by the end of the month, I think, by the... Susan, do you remember the dates particularly?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the next.
All right, so, yeah.
But again, if we just start, are passing the past budget, it, it's basically ready.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three is consideration and possible approval plans for the Bethany Cemetery Vitalization Project located at North Rockwell and Northwest Sixty-third Street. Do we have a report or anything from committee members? I know we have committee members here.
We do. We actually have the committee chair here, Stephanie, and I'll go ahead and ask her to come down. And, um, I've got some slides for you to look at with the plans and the mock-up drawings and then Stephanie and myself and Phil can answer any specific questions that you have. So, this is Plan B. I believe that you've seen Plan A before. I think that was right when I first came on board. And, um, the first plan was a little lofty when they got pricing, so they went back to the drawing board and they, um, looked at ways to make this more cost-effective and to pare it down a little bit. And this is what they have, um, come up with and we can talk about some of those changes here in a minute. But this is a, um, drawing of what everything is going to look like. That is the main, um, gate, the main entrance corner there at... Sixty-third and Rockwell. That is the second gate entrance.
That would be off of, uh, sixty-third?
Yes. The flag pavilion. And then I think all this is in your packet as well, I believe, but this is just kind of an overview, an aerial overview of where everything will be located. And then these are the actual engineered plans that we'll use to go out for bid with. Planning and zoning approved this at, um, their last meeting. And so, now it comes to you, um, to approve, um, this plan for, um, Plan B. This is phase one, um, of what the cemetery committee is hoping to do. They've got lots of plans and lots of goals. Um, this is a really wonderful group. I can't brag on them enough for their vision and their energy. And we actually went out to the cemetery last week or the week before and did another walkthrough as they started kind of getting ideas and thinking about what they want to do next and what they can do next. And, um, it's very exciting to have a group that's put so much time and energy into a project like this. But Stephanie's here to answer questions and we can answer any questions that she might have, um, specifics about the project or the plan.
What, what budget are you operating under, dollar-wise?
We were originally given a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, um, budget for this project. BETA actually donated thirty-five thousand dollars towards that, so that bumped our budget up to a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Well, BETA and, and the City of Bethany are the same thing.
Well, then the City of Bethany, I'm sorry.
So, three hundred thou- three hundred and...
Thirty-five hundred dollars, or thirty-five thousand dollars, sorry.
I had a question. Uh, I looked the plans over, but I didn't see, maybe I missed it, but is the flagpole lit?
Yes. Yes.
But I didn't see any where the power comes from or the drawing for the wiring. I, but maybe it's there. I just didn't see it, but I looked for it.
No, it will definitely be lit. It will be lit. We just need to have somebody to come out there, um, the electricians to come out there whenever we start to, start the project to be able to look and see what we need to do to take that electricity to, to where the flagpole will be moved to.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because if it's going to be underground, we're going to go right over... There's, there's already people interred and, and so I'm not sure how we're going to get that job done. Somebody help me to understand this.
Aren't there solar-powered lighting and stuff like that for that?
There's, it'll probably run along the roadway, the roadway.
Right. We have areas that nobody will be buried at and so that's, that's the area that we would go along.
I'm very confident, confident that the staff will be able to figure that out and they won't cross, go across graves.
Be the electrician. I'll take care of this, okay.
I want, I want to compliment the committee. I think they did a great job. This is a long time coming. I'm excited about it because this is a, uh, kind of a gateway area for the City of Bethany and it sends the right message that, you know, we are actually doing something here. We're using the residents' money to improve, uh, the cemetery, which is an important civic, uh, responsibility that we have. Tell me about phase two. What's that?
Phase two would be more on the interior, um, trying to address the landscaping and the drainage issues that we have going on. We have some dead trees that need to be taken out. We have, um, some, the back fencing needs to be addressed for sure, definitely. So, that, that would be phase two for us.
And there is a, a plan or a discussion that's been made as far as like, is it called a mortatorium or what?
Column barium.
Column barium, okay.
That would be phase three and that would be probably more an ex- of an extensive study because, um, the cost and trying to figure out what we're going to need to be able to cover for the next however many years we want to be able to cover.
Well, I would.
I'll echo Mr. Palmer's, um, comments. Thank you to the committee. This is, this is much nicer than I had envisioned, uh, originally and kind of some, some tentative plans that were, were given to me as maybe a starting point, but this is, looks really nice.
Thank you.
I would also like to chime in there. I had the privilege of being at the very first meeting and the honor of getting to pick the people on the committee. And I got to hear everybody's personal reasons for wanting to be on, on this committee and it's to see your passion and your reasoning of, to being on this. And I agree that this is much better than what it is and has been for decades.
Right.
And I'm excited to see this improve. So, thank you for all that you, you are doing.
Thank you.
I would, I would like to voice something here. Uh, the fencing appears to be only four feet high.
It's six feet. I believe we had had the wrought iron be six feet.
It will be six feet.
Yes, sir.
Because we need to have some security
Correct.
in that area and it seems to be, uh, be something that, that needs to be addressed as long as those six-foot fences are in there, uh, to, to kind of hinder people from getting inside at after hours.
Correct.
To be much, much, uh, make me feel a lot better because I feel I'm going to be the first one to describe it.
This may not be the right time or place to ask, but do you have any idea how many lots there are left?
I thought I remembered, um, well, it's been about a year ago, so I know it's changed, but I thought, um, I heard around three hundred, four hundred. I can't really remember.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for doing this. Thank you for getting something done. I mean, seriously, we are making progress and this is a great example of how the citizens can work together to make a decision to get to the point where they can recommend it to the city council. We appoint and appropriate the money and this is how it works. So, thank you for being a great example.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Please cast your votes. Item four is consideration and possible approval of library change order with TerraCon for building envelope testing. And, um, I believe, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but this item is to be removed from the agenda because it was found already covered in the budget.
Well, it's already covered in the budget, um, but we do need approval to, um, uh, for this expenditure for eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Todd is here that he can answer more directly, but I've passed out the, um, updated project budget and I have circled the area, uh, at the lower portion of the page that says material testing and it was a budgeted amount of seventy-two thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. And this eighteen thousand five will be offset against that. And we have, currently, we have a remaining balance of about just a little over thirty-one thousand in that, um, area for material testing. So, you know, we'll reduce it from thirty-one thousand by eighteen thousand five. So, it was already included in the budget. It was anticipated that this testing would need to be done. So, we just need the approval. Um, and this envelope testing, uh, Todd, would you like to explain what, what it will do for us, please?
Thank you. Um, the, uh, unfortunately for most construction, about ninety percent or ninety-five percent of warranty issues deal with water after the fact. And so, um, the outside of a building in the construction industry is referred to the skin of the building or the envelope of the building and it's basically what prevents moisture from coming into the building. And so, this testing is being, uh, done to confirm that the contractor is installing the work in accordance with the design documents and it's basically a, a process. There's ASTM tests that are identified in the proposal that will be used to do this testing. And so, in some cases, it's a, a rack of water nozzle spraying against the building. In some cases, we build a chamber on the inside to, uh, put negative pressure on it to see what kind of water we get coming through it. In some cases, it's spraying water along a, a horizontal joint, so many feet of that. So, um, this is a fairly common process and so that's part of why, uh, testing was identified in the original budget for the library and this is just part of that process.
So, it's fair to say it's, it's, it's routine and it's part of the, the building process?
Pardon me?
It's part of the building process. It's a bid on it, correct? So, why is it?
Well, no, it wasn't bid on it. The testing is, uh, the testing is not part of the GC's contract. The testing is part of the responsibility of Bethany. And so, Bethany has awarded contracts to do material testing, uh, which is kind of confirming concrete strengths and dirt placement and structural steel inspections. And this is the testing of the envelope of the building.
So, no testing was in the building contract?
No.
None?
No.
Okay, so you, you're telling me that people are going to build a building without bidding anything for any testing?
The testing was specifically excluded from the contract that said it would be provided for by Bethany.
But there's absolutely no testing in the contract?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Well, I think that the City of Bethany should pay for the testing so we can be the people to approve that testing.
Right. And, and that's oftentimes, the, the, there's that dilemma that you run into is do you include the testing as part of the contractor's responsibility? And it's a little bit like asking the fox to guard the hen house and so...
I didn't want to say that.
You didn't? Okay. So, so traditionally, what has happened in more recent years is that cities have paid for the testing directly, so that's what Oklahoma City does on all of their projects. All of the testing is excluded from the general contractor's contract. It's written that way. That's the way it's bid. And so, the City of Oklahoma City has a number similar to this, seventy-two thousand dollars, which is actually a percentage of the contract set aside for testing.
And any money paid by the GC for testing needs to be credited back to the city, correct?
Pardon me?
Any money that's paid by the GC for testing will need to be credited back to the city, correct?
There's, there's no testing paid for by the general contractor.
Just, I understand that. There's no, that's what I'm trying to get, there's no testing.
No, there is no testing in the GC's contract.
We're just verifying that they have done the job that they said they would do for us. That's what this testing is for. And just as an example, um, in the City of Crescent, we just built a four-hundred-thousand gallon water tank and the city paid to have somebody come and inspect it. She did a very thorough inspection and, uh, we found about twenty-five different things from the thickness of the steel that had not been done correctly to the joints not being welded. And because we paid for that, we knew we were getting an accurate assessment of how well the contractor did the job. So, then we went back to the contractor and said, now you have to fix these things because we've done our own testing and we know you didn't do these correctly. Now you have to fix these.
One, one of the things that is in the contract is that if we have a ta- a failed test, then the retesting cost is paid for by the contractor. But he, you know, hopefully, he, he's not counting on having to spend that kind of money because he wants to do it right the first time, but he is responsible for retesting should something fail.
Hey, Todd, does this, uh, right here, does the testing include all of those windows as well?
Yeah, there is a drawing that is a, attached to this, to your agenda and what we have are about seven specific locations where we're going to test. And so, we will be testing one of the windows. Now, we're not going to test all of the windows, but we are going to do one window test and, uh, a lot of wall sections, roofing sections.
Is there any STECO or EFS on the library?
No, I, oh, good, no. Not a big fan of EFS.
Is this testing highly specialized?
Oh, yes, so, yeah.
Is this company, we've used TerraCon before, but this one, they are coming from Tulsa?
That's where they're, TerraCon is actually a worldwide testing organization. They, they have about three hundred offices around the world that does material testing and building testing and envelope testing. And, um, they did the testing, for example, on the GE building that's downtown there is on, on Broadway Extension as you come into downtown. Uh, so they're, they are specialized people that are trained in this. This is, there's ASTM standards that govern how these tests are to be performed and so this, this will be done out of their Tulsa office.
Because there is almost seven thousand dollars in travel expenses.
Well, I, I recognize that, although we kind of hope that we can kind of price that stuff out and pay for that. This is kind of a, a budget for us. Uh, I hope we don't spend all of this money and that's the intention is to keep it down as low as possible.
Every time they do a test, is it a separate trip?
There are four, uh, right now, the way we're hoping to set it up is that there's four separate tests, four separate test days that we'll be performing actual tests on the building.
So, is there nobody in Oklahoma City metro that can perform this test?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. One of the benefits of working with TerraCon is that we have an existing contract with them. And this becomes a change order to their contract. They've done all of the material testing out there. They did the dirt testing for the design and the foundation for the building. And so, by having... And so, by having kind of a sole source responsible for all of the testing under one roof, under one umbrella organization, there's some benefit in that there, so.
So, there's seven thousand dollars in travel expenses?
Yes.
Four different, possibly four different trips from Tulsa?
Right.
So, obviously, it's not one guy bringing a water hose that I'm going to see standing out there spraying the building with water?
No, it's significant equipment that they have to bring with them.
Okay.
And they'll probably stay overnight. I mean, who knows?
Yeah.
Plus, you have meals and then your mileage.
Can I ask another question, totally unrelated?
Sure. Yes, sir.
What is the dirt being removed south of the existing library that were the, the old la, new library?
Well, Steve could talk to that in more detail, but basically what happened is that it's actually expanding the detention capacity of the pond.
Okay.
And that additional capacity was needed because we added more roof area out there, which is an impervious surface, and we've added more concrete paving. And so, neither one of those surfaces can absorb water and as a result of that, under heavy rain, we have to have a place for that water to go. So, that area that you see to the south will get sod on it and will get, will be a grassed area and it would fill up with water in a heavy rain, but then drain back down again. It's above the regular water table of the pond itself.
It's in addition to what we have in the retention pond?
That's correct.
Yes. Because of the construction of the building. And what is the additional cost on that? Do we have an idea?
That's part of the contractor's work to do that.
Part of the contract.
It's all part of the contract, so. And there actually will be another smaller detention space that will be built here directly south of the police station, kind of, or kind of halfway between the police station and here. It's in the park area there. That's another overflow.
There's a depression in there, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve, I don't know, before, related to consideration of the library change order with TerraCon.
Thank you. Because I was about to ask for a motion. And we have a second. Thank you. Please cast your votes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is, I guess, a point of order, but for the record, I would like to have everyone who is on the cemetery committee introduced and make them, the public aware of their hard work as to who they are specifically and have their names listed in the minutes so that everyone can understand and appreciate the time and effort that they put into this and they did a great job. So, could Stephanie or Amanda maybe introduce everybody, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
That's perfectly okay with me.
Well, we have Watsel. She is, well, what do you want to know? I mean, we have Watsel Carlson?
[inaudible].
Okay, perfect. We have Kelly Stoops and Ruth, is it Stem, I'm sorry about the last names. Stem, is it Stemmon? And then we have Karen, you guys got me nervous now. I'm drawing a blank. I'm so sorry. Karen Martin. And then we have Marilyn Wetmoreland, right? Wetmore, see? I'm so sorry. You guys got so nervous.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you. Oh, and we have a couple of people that weren't here as well. I believe Jeff and then we have Wilda Sawyer. Jeff West, Jeff West and Wilda Sawyer's not here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you letting me do that.
We have a problem, yeah.
Item five is appointment of vice mayor for fiscal year two thousand nineteen and I would like to motion to keep Jeff Knapp for vice mayor because over the course of the past year, really enjoyed working with you and, but Jeff has a great expertise and knowledge of state-level government and he is a, in my opinion, a level-headed person that keeps me kind of focused when, helped me see things from other angles. And so, my motion would be to keep Jeff Knapp as vice mayor.
I will third that motion.
Please cast your votes.
Do I need to abstain?
Item six is approval of employment agreement with Janet Smith, the city manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Please cast your votes. Item seven is proposed executive session to discuss the hiring of city attorney. However, is this really necessary to go into executive session or can we just kind of discuss where we are in this? Because the facts are, our charter says that our city attorney has to live within the Bethany city limits, which makes it extremely challenging in these times. But also, the fact is that an acting city attorney does not have to live in the city limits. And we are trying to gather the list of potential acting city attorneys until we can either have a charter change vote or locate an attorney that would fit the city as a city attorney. And it's a council hire. And so, we will be compiling this list and then bringing it to council for interviews and a decision. Is that necessary to go into executive session?
Well, we have some resumes now.
We've had four or five.
I think I have about seven or eight here, actually, and I've made copies for all of the council to be able to take with you tonight. I also would like to submit that our former city attorney, David Davis, has sent a proposal to me that we could, you know, that he would continue handling matters until the council has had time to go through the process and then choose someone. So, he's more than willing to do that. And, you know, talk about the library construction, we have rezoning issues, we have, he's the liaison for the Bethany versus Rockwell and Gulfstream, various code enforcement issues, three lawsuits seeking expungement of criminal records, various things like that regarding our sewer projects. So, he has said that he is happy to continue working with us until the council has made a decision on that. So, we're not in necessarily a huge rush to do this because it is very important that you choose the right candidate.
And I would point out, we want the right candidate, but when we post things on Facebook that says we've already hired a deputy attorney, that really kind of puts a damper on the process to the extent that somebody was considering it and now they've seen, well, you know, I guess they filled that position, which wasn't the fact. And it was posted and it was kind of misleading to the extent that, you don't know what happened. Somebody didn't read it or what the deal was, but if we're going to get quality candidates, we can't be doing that. I need to know that.
That was pulled, I'm not sure exactly how long. I would venture to say before it was up, about five hours is my hope. But as soon as it was indicated to me that it was incorrectly said that he was the city attorney, I did make sure that it was pulled and then from now on, there'll be another set of eyes on those posts before they get put up. So, it was completely a mistake and I've made sure that the gentleman that you're referring to regarding that post, that he is aware that he was not hired for that position.
I understand Mr. Heron's concern. Is there any way we could put a timeline on this related to the process? Because we do need to, we want to make the right decision, but we need to find a way to set this up correctly. Would there be any recommendations that you would have?
We could convene an executive session at the next council meeting and I will be happy to give you these resumes and applications tonight. And you guys can go home and look at them and then come back with your recommendations for the next council meeting.
What other, I know we've posted ads in the journal magazine. What other routes are we taking to be searching for qualified attorneys?
I sent an email to one particular one. I'm just waiting to hear back if they would even be interested. That would be an acting city attorney.
Also, I'm working with the Oklahoma Municipal League. There is, well, their lead counsel is connected with the Oklahoma Municipal Judges Association and so we'll be getting something out there. And that's also, you know, city attorneys and that type thing. So, we should have a good pool of applicants, but I do think we need another week or so, you know, to gather more and to get the word out.
So, to keep from completely jacking up item seven in the minutes in the history of this particular meeting, do we have to vote to not go into executive session or are we good just moving on? Oh, thank you. And then item eight is unnecessary consideration and possible action on matter of hiring city attorney. Yeah. So, we will table that indefinitely?
No.
Or until?
We'll just table.
Okay. Do we need to vote to table this?
That's the attorney. Oh, we don't have to.
Turn to David at that point.
I can make a motion to table that item.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item nine is the call to the public. This is the citizen's opportunity to address the council on general topics related to city business or services and no action may be taken on matters under this item. Do we have anybody that would like to address the council? If so, please state your name and your address and your blood type.
Gilbert Carlson, twenty-six oh one North Rockwell. I have three items that I'll do in three minutes deadline. Council members, mayor. Number one, I'd like to welcome Janet Smith as our new city manager. She's made a favorable impression on those of us that serve on the BETA group with her positive and reinforcing attitude. We look forward to that as you go through this process of drinking from the fire hose, as has been said, and evidence tonight. Number two, I wanted to acknowledge that Mr. Shire looks better in newsprint than he does in person. Congratulations to the two of you on sixty. And the third item, you didn't think I could do anything in three minutes, did you? Third item, the Twenty-third Street Group has a movie night coming up on Saturday, the twenty-third, 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 part of our reinforcement reinvention of Twenty-third Street. Seven o'clock, food trucks, games, face painters, inflatables, more. And then at nine o'clock, the greatest showman begins. It'll be at the hospital grounds. They've been very cooperative. Mr. Knapp, Amanda have been involved in this. Twenty-third Street is still alive and kicking. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Knapp texted me the other night asking if I was willing to ride on an elephant into this thing. And I was willing as long as it didn't turn into one of those crazed elephant videos.
We thought you'd be a great showman.
Okay. Thank you. And I was talking my beautiful wife into riding on that elephant with me, so. Item ten is the city attorney's report, which we will skip because it is not the council member who happens to be an attorney's report. Item eleven is the city manager's report.
I will try and keep it brief. However, I, as you know, today's my second full day, but I have been here for about three weeks now, half-days supposedly. I am learning the organization, obviously, working through, trying to figure out where we all are and, you know, knowing that we need to be sure that we are implementing the proper policies and procedures for things. But really, I've just been getting to know our staff and know what their jobs are and how I can support the staff in what their goals are for the city and also, you know, working with our council. And I've really enjoyed getting to know each one of my council members very much and I really am happy to be here. So, thank you again for asking me to be your city manager.
Thank you. Item twelve is the council members' announcements, comments, and proposals. And tonight, let's start down at Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we had a productive meeting. We're right at one hour and eleven minutes, which is, I would like to compliment the city council in their effective approach to tonight's meeting. I'd also like to thank the mayor for providing a copy of the exit audit related to our previous city manager dated March fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. This provides information related to what we found when Mr. J D Cox left the city of Bethany. And it's interesting, very, very interesting. Thank you for allowing that. I would also like to commend Mr. Curtis Moore and his status is one of the top five insurance agents in the metro. He does a great job and he should be commended because he is a Bethany business owner on Twenty-third Street. So, congratulations. I'd also like to provide a preliminary report on the traffic committee. We're making great progress with the help and guidance of Mr. Steve Katon. I would like to commend him on his ability to get everything put together and allow us to have an effective meeting. We had one today that is an option available for residents if they have issues regarding traffic issues, parking issues. We are now developing a process to allow for grievances to be addressed. That hasn't been around in a long time and it's now available. So, please, you know, be aware of that and if you would like to come talk to me or call me or contact me, we can get you up to speed on how that works. I'd also like to commend Amanda McClellan related to the overlay regarding Ward Two. I think we're making good progress. We have new development in the area and this is a necessary growing pain. We have some issues that are coming up on the Thursday P and Z meeting and I'm anxious to get through all of that and discuss and debate those issues and kind of do the heavy lifting so that the P and Z can make recommendations to the city council so that we can continue the development in Ward Two, specifically the neighborhood association, the Bethany District Neighborhood Association, or Old Bethany, as some people call it. So, with that, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I would also like to acknowledge that I love you, but we could have got out of here in an hour and fifteen minutes had you not talked so much tonight. Mr. Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Shire. Sixty years, I'm right behind you at fifty-four, so don't stub your toes, buddy. I'm closing in on you here.
Hey, I was sleep-footed as error was.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Janet, you're more than welcome and a breath of fresh air. Thank you very much for being here. And don't let it get to you. You've got a strong constitution, I'm sure. Mr. Shire, good job. Or I'm sorry, Mrs. Shire, Charlene, good job. And Mr. Todd, too. It's very commendable, both events. I was going to go through this partial list from our past city manager so that my friends in Austin, Texas, the new Silicon Valley and Colorado Springs don't think that we're completely crazy. I know you two have seen the list of our technology costs, if you will, not just internet, but what we're paying to have the computers turn on. And it's well excessive, a hundred thousand dollars a year. My account hardware and all the backup stuff we have, which we have two systems, I guess, which take care of us on, I don't know if it actually does take care of us, Jeff, on being thirty-five miles apart, but I think we do have a cloud backup.
Yeah, that's a minimum, minimum recommendations.
But the cost of recovering those is unknown. So, you can have all the backup you want, but we have no idea what it will cost us. But I can assure you this, we won't have a choice but to pay it. It will be, it will be complete ransom. Whatever we paid for them to put our data back will be at their complete ransom. And the other thing to look at, which I just noticed tonight, looks like we're contracted to twenty-twenty-one. I did not know that. No idea. With the image net and laser fish, mercy. I mean, the amount of money we're paying them is obscene. The company itself is just obscene. We've got some very wealthy people from Plutton City West and Bethany High School who live in Austin, Texas and Colorado Springs now. They make a million dollars a year and I understand why they make a million dollars a year. But we have got to do something about this and I have no doubt that Janet will be able to take. go and take care of it.
I did not think we could go into a contract more than one year at a time, is that what you think?
We're not supposed to be able to. We can't. Yeah, by law, we cannot. You have to allocate for it every year in the budget.
We've got it right here. But I mean, it doesn't mean anything, because it's not done for a year anyways, but the contract.
We just renewed that contract until July 1st, we believe, for like three months. We have two choices.
Okay, all right, yeah, we'll look at it tomorrow.
Mr. Herron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing.
Mr. McCutcheon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Three short things again. Janet, welcome again. I know I recognized you the last time, but it's completely official now, and it is a breath of fresh air. Thank you for coming to Bethany. Thank you for choosing to come here. And Jeff, Mr. Vice Mayor, congratulations to you. The mayor is exactly correct when he says, you know, you have this very nice calm demeanor about yourself. It's exactly right. It's what our council needs. Thank you. And Stephanie from the city, from the cemetery committee, I remember meeting you at an OML meeting, I believe, about a year ago, and visiting with you there, I believe I was with Gilbert Carlson, and knew right away that it was going to be successful, you know, with your personality, and you're sitting next to a very good friend of mine, Kelly Stoops. She and her son, her son plays with my son, as with Palmer's, and if you've got Kelly Stoops on your side, you're going to do really well. She's a fantastic lady, and, you know, we all have something at stake at that cemetery out there, you know, so it matters to me, too. So thank you.
Mr. Shire.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can only say that my wife and I have had a wonderful life together. We started out, we started dating when she was sixteen and I was eighteen, and we didn't get married until I was twenty-two and she was twenty. So we've had a lot of time together, and we were able to make the adjustments before it started. And she has been a great, a great source of my, what do you want to say, livelihood, as well as what I can get done. And I've been a Bethany guy for eighty, over eighty years, and the next thing I'm going to say is going to be completely divorced from all the accolades that I have said about my lovely wife and our great family. The city of Bethany has changed in that period. We don't seem to be the same group of people that were around in the sixties. As you can see, I'm kind of dressed in this little, this little garb that I have on, which I bought in the city of Bethany at a clothing store that handled everything, I mean, it was a very nice clothing store. You could go in, you could buy a lovely suit, you could buy any men's accessories, you could buy whatever you wanted. We also had ladies dress shops in Bethany that were absolutely outstanding, because my wife and I, I know I always went to the Craker Sisters for her, for our anniversary and her birthday, to buy her something, because it would always be first class. We have degenerated down to where we do not have that, and the problem, we do not have that. We're not promoting our city for what it's really worth. We need to make our city a place that it was sixty years ago, and if we don't, we will not last another sixty years. So it's incumbent on every person that's sitting on his circle up here, and every citizen of Bethany, to see if we cannot improve the face of our city. This cemetery project is just absolutely amazing, because it has, it has had a rundown look for quite some time, and it's not something we want to treat our passed-away citizens Although we do not have a lot of space up there, we need to, we need to promote it as something that we really should have in Bethany. And I think that I will cut it off right there, because I'm getting emotional. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Time to leave the store. C.R., the anthems, C.R. anthems.
Mr. Shire, I really appreciate you saying that, and I really believe that's why we are sitting on this horseshoe as this council team, and the team that we're building, and the city manager is building with the city staff, that we have the people that believe enough that we can get to that point, and that we will get there.
Buckle down.
Yes, sir.
And, and you know, if that means making somebody uncomfortable, that means making, we have to perpetuate this city.
Yep.
Because it's a lovely place to live. I gave a great career in the Navy to come back. I'm getting emotional, I'm sorry.
You're right. If we want things to change, we have to change some things, and so we can't keep doing what we've always done, and we're going to keep getting what we've always gotten, and that's why we're here, and we will move this forward, and you will get to see it.
I hope so.
Mr. Knapp.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the council members for your trust to serve as Vice Mayor for the next year. I appreciate all of your, your, your trust. Also, I would like to reiterate what Mr. Carlson said, June 23rd, on the lawn, bring your lawn chairs, bring your blankets. It's going to be a great time, both before the movie and watching the movie, although the mayor will not be riding an elephant. It'll, it'll be a good time.
I'm upset about that, too.
I'm not going to comment on that. Lastly, and this is very personal to me, I just want to, whether she's watching or not, I would like to congratulate my wife. Yesterday was her last day after thirty years with Oklahoma City Public Schools, and she spent about half of that as a teacher in social studies, with history, geography, multicultural studies, sociology, civics. She taught all of the social studies, and the last about half she spent as a librarian, helping kids from pre-K all the way to seniors. And she got a lot of different cards and kudos from her students over the years, and just like to congratulate her. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to, I had a note down here that we are making progress, just like I told you, Mr. Shire, we are making progress. It takes, unfortunately, doesn't happen overnight. I see progress across the street, because the old police station tower came down today, and they would not give me the light on the top of it for some reason, but that's okay. I'd also like to acknowledge, sitting next to my beautiful wife, Susan, is one of our daughter's Madison, who's first time coming to a council meeting, and, and next to her is Mel, who is your lovely bride, and so, you know, that's, but with Madison, she's sat there, she says she's doing homework, but I think she's probably watching Netflix. I wouldn't blame her, she's at a council meeting, so. And in regards to your comment about the exit audit, yeah, I discovered that council did not get a copy of that, and I thought you had been emailed that, so I felt it was necessary for everyone to have that, so you could see that, and so you have that information. I think that's just wisdom, to do an exit audit when a city manager leaves, before the new city manager shows up, so that they know what they're working with, and so.
And the last city manager does have a copy.
Yeah, and the former city manager does have a copy of that, so. With that, next item is thirteen, new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until June 19th, 2018. I call to order the Bethany Public Works Authority. Item one is the consent docket A and B. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Question.
You have a question?
Excuse me, can you answer on that?
That is part of the budget budget that you have in the last budget. You funded that balance through every budget, right? Seventy thousand, there's been one, and twenty-three thousand, so that's part of the budget. And they're still about, you know, the budget. And we should pass that.
Did we approve that purchase, though, first?
I thought it'd be pretty, would you approve in the budget? It's a, it's a Ford, it's a vehicle purchase to the budget.
We still approve vehicles, I thought, though.
My question earlier was the purchase of a 2008 Ford F-550 for fifty-three thousand dollars.
Did that not come before council?
I went back through January minutes, and I didn't see it. That's not to say I didn't overlook it, but I didn't see it.
Okay, well, I didn't realize we did all of it. Everything from research to.
We should do everything over twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, everything over twenty-five thousand has to be approved by the council, and so everything would have to go through council, unless I approve it, you know, for twenty-five thousand and below. But even at that point, I would not do that without consulting council, so, yeah, if we didn't get council approval, we will bring that to your attention.
Because I know the police department brought a vehicle for approval.
And we get vehicles all the time.
Absolutely, yeah, okay.
Should we pull that until we research to see if it was approved or not by us?
Probably.
Yes, please.
Are we looking at one vehicle, or are you talking about both of them?
Just one or two.
This is one.
Okay, just one.
It's the 550?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Janet is right. I mean, every expenditure, if it's a million dollars, we don't just, it should still come for the council, even though it's in the budget.
Right.
Yeah, so the budget approves the amount, but the expenditure has to be approved by the council, you know, yeah.
So do you want to make the motion?
I will make the motion that we approve and withhold the funding for the 2018 Ford F-550.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Please cast your votes. Item two is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until June 19th, 2018. I call to order the Bethany Hospital Trust. Item one is the consent docket A and B. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until June 19th, 2018. I call to order the Bethany Development Authority. Item one is consent docket A and B. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until June 19th, 2018, and with that, we are adjourned.
Can you give me all the answers?